...day to celebrate the extraordinary progress in women's heart health. So if you will all bear with me while I read this proclamation in recognition of National Wear Red Day. Whereas National Wear Red Day celebrates the extraordinary progress in women's heart health and recognizes that more needs to be done in Crescent City, California, to safeguard women's health for generations to come. And whereas heart disease is the number one killer of women and one in four American women die of heart disease, and whereas most women do not know that heart disease is a woman's problem and they do not take it seriously? That's interesting. Strike. I take it seriously. Whereas the risk factors for heart disease are smoking, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, overweight, obesity, physical inactivity, diabetes, a family history of early heart disease and age, whereas women can promote their own heart health and prevent disease and illness by taking steps to prevent and control the heart disease risk factors. Whereas keeping women healthy and promoting awareness of women's health issues, including heart health, is an important responsibility and depends on the actions of many organizations and groups in our community. Whereas the Heart Truth Campaign and its red dress symbol are building awareness of women's heart disease risk and empowering them to reduce their risk and prevent heart disease. Therefore Crescent City, California, women need to take action to make heart healthy a priority for themselves and their families, become aware of their personal risk factors for heart disease, and take action to lower their risk. Now therefore, the City Council of Crescent City hereby proclaims Saturday, February 6th, 2010, as National Wear Red Day in Crescent City, California, and encourages all citizens to wear red to unite in the national movement to give women a personal and urgent wake-up call about their risk of heart disease. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Crescent City to be affixed this first day of February 2010, signed by myself. And Cheryl is here with her friends. And do you want to just kind of talk to us about the history of how we got to this?
Yes, thank you Mayor Schlong and Councilmen. While I give you just a brief thank you, my sorority sisters would like to pass out some red dress pins to those of you who are here and would like to accept one. The Wear Red for Women Campaign began in 2002 and our sorority, Chi Sigma Row, which is a local chapter of Beta Sigma Phi International, became involved in 2004. The Wear Red Campaign is really a grassroots campaign because at that time, they realized that most women believe that cancer is the number one killer, where heart disease is actually the number one killer. It kills more women per year than all of the cancers combined. That's not to take away from cancer, but most women are not, do not realize the risk that they are at. The campaign has had great effect. In 2005, awareness of heart disease in women was up 25%. In 2006, it was up to 39% awareness. And as of 2007, 57% of American women recognize the red dress symbol and were beginning to realize the importance of their own heart health. And as I said before, we do thank you and the council for helping us to raise awareness of this in our community. It's an important issue.
Thank you. We actually appreciate everything that your sorority does for our community, so I'd like to present this proclamation to you. Okay, we're going to move on to our business for this evening. We have a consent calendar, which consists of approving the regular minutes of January 19th, approval of warrant claims for January 20th through February 1st, and bi-weekly payroll reports, January 16th through the 22nd. And I do have one, I think one change on the minutes. On page nine, item number 15, in the bottom, you wrote Dr. Sink, and I believe his name is Sankos? How do you spell it? I think it's S-A-N-K-O-S. Do you know Kurt?
Actually, it's U-S, Sankos. So S-A-N-K-U-S.
Okay, perfect. And were there any other changes to the minutes, council?
Not on my part.
No. Okay, if we could get a motion to approve with that one small change?
I would move to approve the consent calendar with that one change and also compliment the deputy city clerk on an outstanding job.
Thank you. I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded?
Who seconded that, Madam?
Catherine Murray.
Thank you.
Do we have public comment? Do we have public comment on the consent calendar? If so, please come forward.
My name's Richard Miles, I live at 608 G Street. Friday morning, when I went down to read the consent agenda, I noticed something that kind of bothers me. I can understand why our police department wouldn't need overtime, but there are other departments that charged overtime this pay period. With the economy the way it is, and the city budget the way it is, my question, if we pay staff a regular salary in some of the positions, why are we paying them overtime?
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. And do we have any reports this evening, Rod?
No, Mayor, no reports this evening.
Great. We're going to move into public comment. And before I do that, can I get just a show of hands of who is here to speak? Who is not here to speak for public comment? But who is here to speak on the solicitation ordinance? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. About 10 people? Okay, great. Okay, so if you are here to speak on that, if you would please wait until that item comes up. If you are here to speak on, in general comment, then that's what's going to happen next. So, public comment is any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, the city council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action or placement on a future agenda. For those of you that may be new to the meetings this evening, when you come forward after you're recognized by the mayor, the green light will come on, which means you have three minutes. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will come on, and when your time is up, the red light will come on. And we just ask that you respect that timeframe, especially with many speakers this evening. So is there anyone here for public comment? Ma'am?
Thank you for letting me speak, and can I fix this?
Sure, absolutely. Sure.
I'm Rachel Tau, and I live in the city. Tonight, I want to address the recall signature verification procedure. I'm concerned that so many registered voters' signatures were not counted, including my husband and my neighbors. I witnessed their signatures under penalty of perjury. Ken and I went in and talked to the acting county clerk. We asked how long it had been that his signature wasn't valid. The answer was, and I quote, "It has been counted all along, but this time it didn't." She went on further to explain, and I quote, "That we usually try to notify the voters the reason it was not accepted." My husband, in my husband's case, he was never notified. The voting citizens of our community deserve better. Now, since they, their signatures were not accepted, they all need to go and register again, and that needs to be put out there for everybody to know. Now, many people thank to me for my time and effort. I came away from this with more compassion for the less fortunate people in our community. Only through complaints and investigation by the Secretary of State and the Attorney General will fix this problem. These types of actions taken by the county clerk's office only serves to convince Crescent City citizens and residents to begin to believe in the corruption theory. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Miles?
Yeah, I want this on the record, and who did I give it to?
You can give it to our clerk.
I have, my name's Richard Miles, I live at 608 G Street. I have in my possession at home, a letter from our city clerk. And under California law, I did a records request. I'm aware that the city and my harbor district are having two-by-twos. As a law librarian, I did some research at our county library, law library. I'm aware that two-by-twos necessarily don't make a quorum. What bothers me is that the time and place of these meetings aren't posted, and that no minutes are being taken. Talk about how people nationally are losing faith in government. We heard that in the State of the Union address by our president. Here's another thing I'd like to ask you people to do tonight. When I first moved here, you could safely walk behind Safeways. It was a beautiful park. That's no longer true. Hopefully, part of what's on the agenda tonight may solve that. But I'm requesting my city council to write a letter to the Fish and Game, California Fish and Game Commission in Sacramento, requesting that that area in the past was designated a day-use facility. I think the city and the county should both write them a letter, because over the years, it's been taken over by the homeless and the wardens from the Fish and Game Commission. Very seldom go in there and write citations. They have the authority to go in there and write citations. Until this community decides to take Elk Creek back, we're always going to have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nunn?
Westley, Nun Crescent City. I did a little rough math, and first I looked at the available connections, sewer connections. It's about 364 approximately. That's roughly 11% of the current residents that are hooked up. What is that, 3,400 or something like that? So I did a little rough math, and I was thinking, gee, the state advanced us quite a few hundred hookups. That was an advance, and we used most of those up. And so, that goes over 11%. Now, I understand the Willdan report set it at 11%. I don't know if the state did or not, but when we use up the 364, which looks like it'll be used up before very long, do we stop there? I mean, does it all halt, or does more work have to be done on the plant in order to go past that point? I know it's not a question-and-answer time. I understand that. I don't know if there's anybody who could answer some of these basic questions. It's just rough math. If there is, please contact me. Is there anyone willing to respond or that would contact me?
Mr. Butler?
Yeah, we'll be in touch with you directly tomorrow or, you know, after tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Ms. Dickey?
Bad thing, let people know who you are. I'm Victoria Dickey, I live in the county. I just was made aware that we have enough signatures for placing the initiative on the ballot to roll the sewer rates back. And what I'm hoping is that the council doesn't try to do anything to thwart that by either writing threatening letters from the attorney to the people, or filing lawsuits to stop it, or trying to scare people with doom and gloom. Let the people speak. If they speak, and they finally say that they want this to go forward when they've got all the information, then you will have my blessing. Otherwise, you get to see me often. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Ms. Morrison?
Shaw.
Hello.
Connie Morrison, I live in the county.
Can you pull this up to you, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
The two-by-two meeting, I read in the headlines, and it's to question the legality of the two-by-two. And I would say the first question must be, are two-by-two meetings effective at notifying elected representatives what the wants and needs of the community and the citizens are? Does this forum allow citizens to participate? Is this an effective way for citizens and elected officials to work together? Or, in Crescent City's case, just another way for the Bad Old Boys Club to continue with their infamous ways of running the city? When did I hear, "No law north of Klamath"? That's what I heard when I first got here. Still hearing it. How do you guys know what the people want, if you never meet with them? And especially if you're going to be meeting secretly? And even if it is legal, so what? It's secret. I personally walked with Donna as she met with the citizens at their businesses, and she asked them, what are their needs? What was going good, what wasn't going good? And they'd tell her. From that meeting, she knew what her job was going to be that day, what research to do, and who to ask if she didn't know. She's tenacious. She'll find out. If you ever need to know anything, ask her, she'll find out for you. Oh, she can't, she's been censured. Sorry, she can't open her mouth. Sorry, Non. I haven't seen any of you other guys do anything for the people. And now these secret, unannounced, non-public meetings are being, trying to decide if they're The grand jury report during, when Mr. Barnes said that he went to Mr. Black and asked him if, "Can I go ahead and develop this property over here? It's in the county, I don't think I have to say anything." And you didn't know, and he asked you, and you didn't know. So he couldn't, it really wasn't illegal, what he did, because he did ask, but nobody knew. And this kind of reminds me of that thing. I also wanted to talk about Mr. Kenneth and his disability. I saw the form that rejected his vote, and it was because his T didn't look like it did two years ago, because he has Parkinson's disease. And I will find that form, and they said I could have it. And it needs to go to the citizens, the American disabilities, citizens, well, okay, my red light came on, I just got nervous. People need to see how you guys run the city.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, sir?
Yes, I'm Dan Honeywell from the county, and I also do business with you people.
Honeywell?
Honeywell.
Thank you.
Honeywell Tractor Service. And I would like to know why we spend so much money on tourism when we let our downtown look so bad. This just really aggravates me, because I look down here at this new motel. I mow that property for them, but they'll only let me do it a couple times a year. You go around to the lighthouse, you got two blocks that look like hell. And you got right down the main street, and all these lots around here, fire hazards. They bring everybody's property down? It's hazardous. You got places right in town here that's got grass four feet high. There was not one letter written to the people this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Come on, Tim. I'm just teasing you. He's usually got something good to say.
My name is Tim Hoon, I'm a city resident. I want to say something about the ordinance tonight, but just listening to public comment, I did want to say, you know, I thought, wow, you guys have a tough job, you know? And just as a city resident, I am, I have to agree with this gentleman. I'd like to see a few more lawns mowed and some, some grass cleaned up, and I thought of buying a weed whacker and walking around myself. But by and large, I am so proud of our city and the way it's run, and, and I think it's run in the most democratic, open-minded, positive way that a small city in California can be run. You know, we're, you know, that's, anyway, I'm just proud of the job that the city council has been doing, and, you know, and all the different departments of the city, you know, and I, I did think it was funny, when I paid my water bill late, I had to pay a $4 fee, extra fee, so no problem, put that to good use. That's what I get for not saying it on my bills.
We appreciate that, Tim.
It is nice to see good people, you know, as yourselves, you know, doing kind of a hard job. And, and I'm looking forward to later in the agenda, we get to talk about the crab festival and all the great things going on here in Crescent City that we can take pride in our community, and good things going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. I was really kidding, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? If none, we'll move forward. Okay, moving on to continuing business. Can we please consider and approve payment 32 for wall and construction, payment 33 for Stover Engineering for the wastewater treatment plant, item number seven. Are there any questions for Mr. Butler?
I have a comment. It's been suggested to withhold payment to Stover because of the labor compliance issue. I wonder if we can consider doing that?
Would you like to expand? I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
The first complaint on Colburn Electric that was put in for falsifying payroll and non-payment of overtime, I received-
Which, which happened four months ago, and has been resolved, I believe?
No, actually, it's not resolved. I just received a letter, a copy of a letter from the state Labor Enforcement Bureau, listing out $330,000 plus. About half of that was in penalties.
Right.
And that's, was dated December.
And you're talking about Colburn Electric?
Yes.
Correct.
So I'd like to suggest that since there's that one labor compliance problem, and I've heard about another two, that the payment to Stover not be made at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the wall and construction and Stover Engineering payments as presented.
I'll second that.
Any public comment? I'll take a quick public comment. Mr. Miles?
My name, Richard Miles. I hate to say this, but I'm getting a little tired of the complaints by Ms. Westfall against Stover Engineering. I want to remind Ms. Westfall, Mr. Stover has to carry airs and emissions insurance. I believe Mr. Stover is doing an excellent job for the city, and I believe Ms. Westfall needs to quit riding her one-horse pony through town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Mayor Schlong?
Yes. Passes three to one. Moving forward to number eight. This is waiving the full reading and reading by title only, adopting ordinance number, do you have the ordinance number?
Ma'am, I didn't scroll down yet, sorry about that. 752.
752.
Yes.
Which is an ordinance in the City of Crescent City, Delmar County, State of California, approving the zoning code amendment 0901, exempt from CEQA within the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and adopting the zoning code amendment to amend the city's zoning code, revising our chapter 17.04 and definitions of the zoning code, adding definitions relative to small wind energy conversion systems, and we're replacing the expired chapter. Ms. Rambo?
Thank you. Public hearing and first reading for this ordinance was held at your last meeting, January 19th. Now, it's simply coming forward now for its second reading as required. At the January 19th meeting, there was one modification that the council asked for, that passage has been removed. So the new ordinance you have in front of you includes that removal.
Great, thank you. I want to publicly thank the planning commission for moving forward with this very lengthy process to allow our city to enter into an ordinance that will allow small wind energy conversion systems. And do I have any public comment before we adopt this? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. And can I get a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Okay. And do I need to pull this vote, Mr. Black?
Please.
Please do so.
Councilmember Slert?
No.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Schlong?
Yes. Passes three to one. Thank you. Moving on to new business. What I think we'll do is I'll just take people in order, but basically, we'll review, consider and waive the full reading and read by title only, ordinance number? 753, which is a new ordinance that we're looking at to handle a public issue of unwanted solicitation within the city limits. And I'd just like to, before I have Mr. Plack make his presentation, you can still, you don't have to leave. I'd just like to let all of you know how we got here today. And last year, I had our first town hall meeting, which was a huge success, and we had about 50 or 60 people in attendance. And when we had a group, in a smaller group setting, one of the issues that we addressed as a community was public safety. And at the end of that- And at the end of that meeting, one of the priorities that came out of that group and was adopted by the entire group at the end of the day, uh, was, uh, dealing with the problems of, um, solicitation within the community, um, city limits, and the, um, the unsafe, uh, feeling that was providing to some of our citizens and to the tourists that come into town as well. So, Mr. Plack has worked on this issue for months. Um, what I respect most about, uh, this process, uh, that we've arrived at tonight is that Mr. Plack went out and met with many community members, um, he did a lot of his homework, he researched, uh, other ordinances in many other areas and communities and what kind of a process they went through to find a successful solution. So, um, I'm happy to say that I feel we are moving in the right direction, and we are eager to hear, uh, more input this evening. So, Mr. Plack.
Uh, this is the, uh, as you mentioned, Mayor, uh, this results from the, uh, town hall meeting that we had on May sixteenth, where the citizens stood up and said they want to see something done with the, uh, solicitation issue that has been becoming almost rampant in, in the city. Uh, there are laws that prohibited the aggressive solicitation, and they're more likely to survive the legal challenge than the laws that prohibit all solicitation, and therefore to be encouraged. A growing number of jurisdictions have enacted aggressive solicitation laws, most of them within the last ten years. In my research, the police can use proactive enforcement methods, but I do not feel that that is where we are at, at this point. I think that, uh, solicitation, it's, uh, we need to study this issue, we need, we need to make sure that we use all of our resources, and all of us together as a community need to address this, and it's not just a police issue. Uh, we need to look at different issues in depth and from different angles. The question is, are we willing to consider new ways of doing, doing this? Uh, are we willing to work with other community agencies to find effective solutions to this as well, uh, to the problem? However, by, just want to state that by ignoring this issue, it could evolve into a total police issue, uh, which is not the proposed route I think that we should, uh, take at this time. Now, it is, uh, your police department is committed in considering different ways in dealing with solicitation, such as, which we already have done, by working with, uh, the other community agencies to find effective solutions to the problem. We also need to include, uh, committees that we had, not only through, uh, people like Kevin Hartwick and his company who facilitated your town hall meeting, we wanted to maintain a consistency here. He knows firsthand exactly what, uh, the citizens really wanted, so therefore, it only made proper sense for him to be, uh, helping me with this committee. But I also took into account the, the use of bid, uh, RHS, as well as charities, uh, coalitions, uh, nonprofit groups, donors, and, and churches as well. So therefore, a little bit of, uh, community, uh, input was placed into that over the time that this took place. It was very, uh, difficult to get everybody together, which is the reason why it took so long to get this proposal, uh, together. But what's more important is that people need to understand what type of solicitation are, there are. Uh, there's a passive solicitation, and that's soliciting without the threat or menace, often without any words exchanged, all it is just a handout with a cup of coffee. However, the one, what we're dealing with primarily with is the aggressive solicitation, which coercively with actual implied threats or menacing actions that an individual takes upon a citizen, uh, in order to show that these issues are, are really escalating. Uh, my statistics, uh, do show this, uh, since my assaults have gone up quite substantially, and a lot of them are contributed down to that, uh, to that type of issue. Uh, the, the problems of solicitation is the police priority, when it comes to aggressiveness, um, this is when usually the police, uh, come into play here, and, uh, before that, it is generally used to, uh, make sure that the citizens know that they don't need to be approached aggressively by an individual, uh, to show that, uh, to get the solicitation. Merchants worry that customers are going to be discouraged about, um, coming to their businesses. Uh, we're concerned about the physical assault, not only of the citizens, not only because of the tourists, but also the solicitors themselves as well. So therefore, you know, we're trying to find an overall approach where everybody, uh, can live together, uh, coexisting regardless. Uh, disputes and fights over territories are not uncommon between solicitors, and some people tolerate, uh, and some empathize or sympathize with the act of soliciting, uh, while others are generally frightened by that because of the, what's represented there. Uh, the related problems that we have been seeing there, as well as in a lot of other communities, is that, uh, disorderly street conduct and street crimes about the police that we're concerned about are basically disorderly conduct, such as public intoxication, public drinking, urination and devocation, harassment, intimidation, and, and passing out in public places. Uh, the question is, what do you want your police department to do? Do you want to spend all of our, uh, resources in dealing with these issues, or do you want to, uh, look at what would be the best ordinance to be passed for, uh, to deal with this related problem? Because it's, it's not going to go away, it's the First Amendment right to allow them the freedom of speech, which is not, not the issue. The issue is what, overall, as a community, what are we going to deal with, are we going to present this type of image to the community? Uh, disorderly conduct of, uh, transient, as well as homeless, where, uh, we do have no camping in the city limits, uh, we also hear, again, we have the public urination, sleeping on the sidewalks, entranceway, and beach benches. We have, uh, a lot of calls in the morning, it seems every morning, we have call after call after call in dealing with individuals that are sleeping on, on the, in front of doorways of businesses. This past weekend, we had, uh, one individual that took up twelve calls for police service to go down there to deal with him, uh, because of the, the solicitation and the intimidation factor. We have also disorderly actions in public places, uh, we usually have harassment, particularly of a female pedestrians. Uh, we do have problems involving per snatching and ATM robberies, uh, which, you know, uh, it's, this past weekend, we were, uh, we had another bank robbery in which the individual was, uh, was apprehended within nine minutes, thank, thank goodness. But the thing is, is he came up here, uh, without any means of support, been living here for three weeks, uh, no location, and I'm just wondering how many people he's approached, asking for money before he decided to commit the bank robbery. That concerns me a great deal. We also have issues with trash picking for food and recyclers, and we constantly are getting, uh, calls from the public involving, um, you know, people grummaging through the garbage and, and throwing the garbage all around their, uh, front yard and the streets and curves. So therefore, there are a lot of issues that, that need to be addressed here, and the factors contributing to intimidation is one of the reasons why, uh, with the help of the, the legal department, Pa Black and Martha Rice, is that, you know, our proposed ordinance is written in a fashion that deals with the restrictions of time, manner, and location that these individuals, they can still solicit, but we're putting the restrictions on them of those locations, the time, manner, as well as location. Now, just like you mentioned before, I did a great deal of research on this, legal has done a great deal of research on this, I, uh, contacted twenty-three other cities, uh, in where they have solicitation, uh, all the way from Florida to Merced, California, Santa Cruz, Modesto, Anaheim, uh, Ukiah, Santa Monica, and as well as contacting, uh, the U.S. Department of Justice, community-oriented policing services on solicitation as well. So therefore, there's a lot of background, uh, information in regards that, that's being placed into our ordinance as well. Uh, some of the factors contributing to the intimidation is the ease in which a solicitor can be avoided. Can a shopper avoid an individual? It's kind of difficult for them to do that, particularly if they're driving in the car or parked in the parking lot, sitting in their car, they're more or less trapped there, particularly if they're waiting for somebody there to have somebody approach them. Uh, what is the degree of vulnerability? This is addressed on the, the ordinance as well as a pamphlet that has been saturating the, the city for the last three weeks. Uh, the presence of passerby's, um, is there physical appearance, the reputation of the solicitors? It's, it's quite frightening, particularly to the seniors. Uh, I go with the seniors every, every month, and, uh, if there's one thing that they tell me all the time is that they're scared to death to do any shopping downtown, simply because of, they feel very vulnerable, that these people do, uh, have a tendency to target them as well. I've heard the same thing involving tourists. Tourists will go to Brookings, and they will not, uh, you know, shop in the Crescent City area for this, this factor alone. Uh, there's characteristics of persons being solicited, uh, the number and the volume of the solicitors in the area are, can be very overwhelming, particularly for an elder, elderly person. Who the solicitors are, some solicitors suffer from mental illness, there's, there's no doubt about that, but most do not. Uh, solicitors are nearly as likely to have been crime victims as well as offenders themselves. Uh, there's a constant battle between, uh, you know, the solicitors to make sure that here again, a lot of times that they do spend money, they don't hold on to money afraid of being robbed, uh, they do fight for the corners that are more lucrative than others, they do trade, um, uh, sometimes they'll have dogs with them, sometimes they'll have kids with them, and they do rent these individuals out for the sympathy-type approach to get more, uh, money from a citizen who is very, um, sympathetic to their needs and feel sorry for them. Uh, however, that some are transient, but most have been in the community for a while. The, uh, solicitors and the homeless people are not necessarily one and the same, these are two different issues. It is, uh, we're not talking about the homeless issue, we're just strictly talking about the solicitors. And even though there is a cross, uh, between the two, uh, issues, but we are talking primarily and only on the, the solicitors. Uh, so the solicitors make no mistake about it, they develop their own sales pitch, and they do compete with each other, no different than any business competes with other businesses in the area. Uh, they constantly do that, often, though not always, these sales pitches are fraudulent in some respects. Now, the, uh, this is also addressed in our ordinance as well. Most are not interested in regular employment, uh, some do not buy food with the money they receive, however, drugs and alcohol is the primary product that is being used. Who gets solicited? Up to sixty percent of people report giving money to solicitors. Uh, some evidence suggests that women and minorities tend to give more freely. Uh, male, female, uh, couples are usually approached, and, uh, the reason being is because the male has a tendency to feel as though he wants to show the female that he does have a, uh, a kind heart and give money to, uh, these individuals. We have tourists, um, there's a lot of, uh, diners and/or shopping centers, people are ready to spend money. Uh, also, as they walk out with food and everything, it's a, it's a, an approach that individuals have, uh, they do spend a lot of time on their skill, and they're very good at it. The, uh, the solicitors go where the money is, that's the reason why you have an overabundance of them at the, uh, Safeways, because they live right behind there. You have, uh, they, they go into the area where they do have a lot of pedestrians, uh, a lot of motorists, especially those who are likely to have money or give it or plan to spend it. Uh, it's more common in communities that provide a high level of social services, which we do in this community. Uh, the city and county do a wonderful job in, uh, trying to help as many people as they can, but the economy being the way that it is, it's very difficult for them to be able to see that, uh, they're having a hard time making ends meet as well. Um, the solicitors are drawn to areas where both free social services and generous passerby's are plentiful. Now, you look at, you know, uh, different areas of the country, but here, if you have an individual that, granted, uh, depending on how much a solicitor can make varies depending on his or her skill, their personal appeal, uh, as well as the area in which they solicit. There are estimates that vary, that some only get a couple of dollars a day, to the low end, to twenty to fifty dollars a day, and upward to a high end of three hundred dollars a day. This is all tax deductible. You took, uh, take an average of maybe thirty dollars a day, that thirty dollars a day equals about a thousand a month, twelve thousand a year. You don't think social services could use an extra twelve thousand dollars a year? The problem is, is that we have citizens that really need to be educated as well on how to deal with these issues. The whole idea is this, is to try to cut down the number, or number of dollars that is passing hands in the parking lot. And a follow-up to this ordinance would certainly reveal that we would be able to have that type of redeemable coupon program, in where I would be working with the, uh, the charities, the churches, uh, the homeless advocates, uh, things of that nature, in hopes to cut down or dry out the, uh, parking lots, so that money is not passed hands. But, an individual as a citizen, because this community really is very generous, and always has been in the past, and they've always stepped up in trying to help people in need. But when you are not educated as to what type of dealings that you're using here, or what you're faced with, you feel sorry for individuals that come up and try to ask you for money. The point is, is that you have these, these individuals that, as a citizen, they do not know how to handle it, so therefore, they give them money. But if you give them a coupon instead for a free shower, or some toiletries, or linen, or things of that nature, in addition to what the city and county already offers, uh, if an individual says, "I don't want that," you know exactly that the money that you would have been giving them is going to go to drugs and/or alcohol. I know there's, time and time again, people have come up to me, said, "I've even gone in the store and bought food." Not even just for them, but for the dog, and then as well as any, anything else accompanying them. And the thing is, the citizen is really fabric, uh, uh, shocked to see that, you know, these individuals, a lot of them do not want, uh, the, uh, the food, but they do want the currency that goes along with it, to buy whatever they want. So therefore, here again, we have an issue in the community that's no different than any type of community. Now, it's obvious that there are typical daily, weekly, and monthly, and seasonal patterns and predictable cycles. Levels drop around the dates that the governmental benefits are distributed, and once that is deleted, the levels resume and you have more solicitation. There's daily laws in when chronic inebriates of addicts go off to drink or take drugs, so there's a lull in the day. Uh, regular solicitors, key fairly routine schedules, and they do, they do usually work between six, six, uh, four to six hours a day. The economics, the state of the economy at the local, regional, and even national level affects how much solicitation occurs. As the economy declines, solicitation increases. As a government benefit programs become more restrictive, solicitation increases. As people with mental illnesses are increasingly released into the community without often adequate follow-up care, here again, solicitation also increases. Where there are inadequate detoxification and substance abuse treatment facilities, solicitation again is high. So, what can we do about these, the prohibiting of the aggressive solicitation? This is what we're trying to fight, not, not the, the overall question of whether or not they, they should be able to do it or not. They will be able to do it, because the ordinance will read that they can solicit, but they, there's going to be restrictions. For instance, the time during the daylight hours, from sunrise to sunset. The manner in which it's, it shows that they cannot be approaching people with more than one other individual with them, they have to stand three feet away from a, uh, an end of, uh, citizen or a person that they're- of, uh, citizen or a person that they're soliciting. They can't solicit on private property, they can't solicit, uh, on, uh, twenty feet from a bus stop, ten feet from an intersection. Uh, all of these restrictions have passed the muster of the courts. So when you have the time, the manner and the location, you have a solid ordinance that will pass, because it has passed in more than twenty-three other cities as well. So, we need, uh, on the ordinance, these are the, uh, prohibition of, uh, the aggressive solicitation in where, uh, they cannot interfere with pedestrians or vehicles, banning from errors as a condition of probation. Uh, sentence convicted solicitors to appropriate community service, which is the ultimate goal, not to put them in jail. Uh, discourage people from giving money to solicitors and encourage them to give to charities that serve the, uh, the needy, as well as supplement the government funding that is being, um, diminished quite rapidly throughout of Sacramento. Because you have very good, um, agencies, you have social services, you have, uh, you have moral and human services as well as others that really honestly do their best with the limited amount of funds that they have coming, uh, towards them. We would be using civilian patrols to monitor and discourage soliciting, uh, encourage people to buy and give solicitors vouchers instead of money, which I touched on a little bit before, and regulating alcohol sales to chronic alibarians who solicit in the area as well. Uh, so there are a lot of things that we want to be able to, be able to deal with before having people arrested for this, this, uh, we want to promote legitimate use of the public places to displace solicitors, provide adequate, uh, social services and substance abuse treatments to reduce solicitors' need to solicit, and enforcing laws, including this one that's being proposed, that prohibit all solicitation, uh, violations. I try to get that as quickly as possible. So I think there is, uh, quite a number of individuals in the, in the audience, uh, that are...
One of the, excuse me, um, can you get the lights? Donna, would you mind?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of the things that, um, I am also happy about is that Doug has put together a pamphlet that is an educational piece, um, that talks about the main components of the ordinance, but also gives lists about eight different resources where those that are in need can actually go to these locations to get food, clothing, transportation, medical needs, social services, um, and he has actually already gone out and given this information to the habitual solicitors. Um, and he, uh, he also has contact, uh, phone numbers and everything, so I think it's very helpful. So, I think, you know, our, our first goal is to educate those, uh, that are out there soliciting aggressively, and, uh, then hopefully a warning and, uh, hopefully after that, um, we'll take it from there, but...
Yeah, the whole, the whole purpose is not, like I said before, Mayor, is not to put individuals in jail, that's, that's not...
Right.
We wanna help people get back on their feet and use this as a humanistic approach instead of a law enforcement approach. Right now, we can do that, and it's important that we do it now. Uh, the whole idea is to, you have to hold people accountable for their actions and, uh, what's more important is that these individuals, if they fall short of the law, uh, or the ordinance here and where they're given a citation, they're not gonna be arrested initially, they are gonna be given a citation. And if they don't, uh, if they don't abide by that citation, obviously the courts will step in, but the whole idea is the community service. But you look at all of these businesses that are shutting down early, that have shut down early, such as Ray's and, uh, Rite Aid before they used to be open twenty-four hours, and they shut down for quite a while. You know how much commerce this community lost in that because people are afraid to, uh, to approach, uh, you know, the business or go to their car from the business, so...
Well, it's, I think it's important, we're educating, we're providing, we're providing resources for those in need, and we're protecting our citizens so that they do not feel unsafe, um, to go out and, and use our services here in, in our city, so, thank you very much, I appreciate all your efforts. And, uh, we are going to take public comment now. So, um, I think what we'll do is just, if you wanna, maybe two or three of you go ahead and, and get in line and then we'll just, if you can just kinda keep it rotating so we can make this fairly quick, um... Okay, we'll start with Ms. Starr.
Carolyn Starr, Crescent City with, uh, homeless help. I wanna say that Chief Black has done an exemplary job of research.
Could you just pull this a little closer to your mouth? We're having some audio issues.
And if you could also state your name again, I didn't catch it.
Carolyn Starr, two N's, two Rs.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank Chief Black for an exemplary research job. In six years of helping the homeless, I've only met one legitimate panhandler. The rest were ex-cons and addicts. But I'd like to distinguish between holding up a sign and panhandling, which I consider very intrusive. Holding up a sign is passive unless the person's misbehaving. Some of our clients, the only income that they can get is holding up a sign and this, these for reasons that the charities do not provide. The charities are doing a great job, but their grants are limited, and you'd be surprised how many needs you'd have. What my homeless want is housing, or a legitimate camp, place to camp. Uh, but anyway, I'd like to distinguish between holding up a sign as a solicitation and panhandling, which is very intrusive. The other thing I would ask, uh, is that under penalties on the pamphlet, uh, that a few words be said before the penalties, like after a first warning. We do have, like you say, mental patients, people with attention deficit disorder, and, uh, they need to be warned and not hauled in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miles?
I wanna tell ya two experiences that I've had recently, then I have a request of the city of the chief. In the morning, most mornings, I go over to Ray's early, have breakfast. I'm not a good cook. Not too long ago, there was a homeless person. He had a knife strapped to his leg. Uh, there's kind of a bus area between Rite Aid and there. This gentleman was rattling the paper machines. I went inside and told the management. A sheriff's deputy came out of city police. They told the guy to move on. The presence of that knife on that gentleman scared me. And then, not too long ago, I had a conversation with our Veterans Affairs person, the Vet A lot of these panhandlers proclaim they're veterans and they need help, and many of them aren't. They're using a right that a veteran has, misusing it. But when I talked to Adele, she says many of are non-transit vocal homeless people, there's a few that are veterans. And once a year, they come out of the woodwork when Veteran Affairs, Local Veterans Affairs Office has their annual stand-down. Adele arranges trips to Arcata, the homeless populations down there, they get haircuts to get warm clothes, they get, sometimes get medical checkups. So I would hope the chief would add Veterans Affairs Office to this list because if someone's truly a veteran, Adele can help them. They can get them over to Roseburg and then get help.
Thank you.
But, I believe the majority of our homeless people are transits, and they really do us a disservice because when you have tourists going into Safeways and they come out of there and right there at the entrance, you got, you know, so until you people write the Fish and Game Commission and we route them out of Elk Creek, you're gonna have them.
Mr. Hartwick? I'd like to thank you for your service to the city, uh, through this process, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Um, the, uh, I just wanna comment on the process and, and the history again to repeat to verify that what had taken place. The, uh, the result of, uh, whining and blaming to the mayor about a situation resulted in the fact they got asked to help, and, uh, that did happen and we came to the meeting and, and in the process of discussing public safety, which, uh, I think, uh, needs additional conversation. This one item came, uh, step forward amongst others, which I think still continues to need more work and I think more focus. Um, the issue of panhandling, uh, was brought forth from various perspectives, I think there was a clear misunderstanding probably from all of us, what it means to be homeless, what it means to be a panhandler. The issue is, the, it was really not focused on taking or hurting an individual, it was about the effects of those that are causing a problem, those that are violent in the way they were, uh, trying to obtain resources from people, and those that, uh, in my opinion, um, are not exactly the best light on the city as people are coming to town. It just doesn't do us any favors. The issues are huge, the problems are way past any of, anything that I could ever resolve. The issue though sits in, in front of us and something we need to work on. I did witness, uh, the process of bringing people together, professionals in the area and the community. Uh, the chief did a great job of making the invitation over and over and over again. He also brought research of communities that failed in their efforts to deal with this issue, that their, their rules were thrown out. I think he did a great job of turn, doing, taking the best of what was available and integrated into a plan. Um, and I, I think, uh, as far as moving forward, you're going to have to make some steps. Uh, this seems to be one that is, uh, the least harmful and, and can be the most helpful for the community. I'd like to make one comment, as brought to my attention by my teen, or now no longer teenage daughters, um, I told them I was coming to do this and they wanted to let me know, um, although I didn't employ the strategy. When I was in high school, the, uh, the way to obtain alcohol is to go to those locations you've named and find those pieces, people you were talking to, and they will buy you what you need. Um, now, that's, that's a reality, as spoken by those who know what takes place, uh, the high school students. Um, that's a side, side benefit of maybe some cure to a, an additional problem, but I support the process and I support what the chief has done, and I think he's done a great job.
Thank you very much.
I'm Bonnie Weaver, I'm part of the management team at Safeway and we're behind this program a hundred percent. We deal with, uh, panhandlers, solicitors, we deal with violence, uh, they spit on our wall, they steal our pallets, they harass our customers. I have ladies that come in that will not walk back out with their groceries because they're afraid. We just want something to do to stop this, and we're behind this a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gilbert Garrez, I live in the county.
Is it Wilbert?
Carolene, Gilbert.
Gilbert.
Garrez.
Garrez.
G-A-R-R-E-Z.
Thank you.
Spell that again, sorry, I didn't catch it. Sorry, I'll pause it.
Got it?
Spell your last name, please.
G-A-R-R-E-Z.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I'm a county resident, but I do most of my business in the city and I'm also handicapped, and sometimes when I need medication or something, I need something at Safeway or at, at Ray's. I ask my wife to go and she's really, really doesn't wanna go, so I have to accompany her because she's afraid of these people, and I can't say I, I blame her. I know that, I'm not too sure that, that Walmart is in the city, but if it isn't and it's in the county, uh, maybe somebody could put a bug in the sheriff's ear and maybe follow in the footsteps of Mr. Platt, because I think it's a great idea, and I hope you guys really support him on this. Some of these people, it's, grandpa did it, my folks did it, I'm doing it, and my kids are gonna do it. Not all of them, but some are. And I really think we need to, to change our image here in the city of Crescent City. I've lived here fourteen years, I love it, but I don't like the panhandlers, I really don't. So please help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jody McNamara, I'm the manager for Redwood Coast Transit, and Chief Black contacted me about this, and safety is a big issue with the drivers and numerous, numerous phone calls that we get from mostly our elderly passengers with our bus stop at Ray's, between Ray's and Rite Aid. Our buses come in through there every half hour and they don't wanna wait outside. And, um, with the dial-a-ride service, it's not as much of an issue, we can have the driver pull up there, wait for them while they're, they stay inside. The fixed route, it causes problems as, you know, we don't want them out there, I understand what they're saying, so we are holding up the buses, but therefore then we're running late, waiting for them to come out with all their groceries and everything, um, and they, they're just constantly getting, mainly at that stop there, getting harassed and their fear for that. And talking with the drivers, there's also the concern with them, and I think that the ordinance with having them, I think it was twenty feet from the, or ten feet from the curb, is an issue with the drivers when they're trying to make their turns and they have them sitting right there and sometimes out in the street, trying to make their turns, trying to keep our buses on the road and keep safe, and watching them sitting out on the ground, it's hard to see with animals and everything, so, I think he did a great job and I, uh, really liked the, away from the bus shelters would be nice, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, real quick, did you have the opportunity, I mean, uh, the, maybe letting the PD know the times that the bus goes to that certain stop? I mean, maybe we could kind of monitor that a little bit?
We can share that. And I did, he did give us flyers also, and we've had him on the buses and handed them out on the buses too, so we distributed them that way.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Robert Duncan, I live here in the city. I am one of the bus drivers for Redwood Coast Transit, and I think this is a good thing because I have seen the ongoing problem, and, uh, I, I have also seen, uh, I've had the passengers afraid to get off the bus, especially their Ray's there, because there has been people there and, and they haven't won. And I've also had to wait for them to come out of the store to get on the bus because they've been afraid to get out, so, this is a good thing, and also them right at the corner trying to make the turn, you really have to be careful because you don't want them stepping out, so, you know, you don't wanna run over anybody, so, this is a good thing, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, Mike Sullivan, uh, live in Huaichu, but I have a business in the city limits. Um, I, I think it's important that, that the community knows, and I, I know the coun, I appreciate the council taking this up and taking the lead on this. Um, the community's very generous, but there, there has to be rules, and I think this is a great, uh, starting point, and I applaud Chief Black for bringing this forward, um, and I will bring it back to the county, um, for, for Sheriff Wilson and for, because Walmart also deals with that same issue over there. Um, I, I do think it's, I've had a lot of complaints, um, as a supervisor from constituents that really have been, the safety's been a big issue, and I've had a couple incident myself with my eight-year-old son going in the Safeway, coming out and, you know, the night, and guy's saying, "Well, I, I need to be taken to the hospital," and I'm telling him, "Well, I'll dial nine-one-one." "Oh, no, that's good," and then he walks off, so, um, I, I do think it is an issue, and I, I'm glad you guys are dealing with this, and, um, once again, I'd encourage you to vote for it, so...
Thank you. Mr. Honeywell?
Thank you.
I am a senior, I eat a lot of times at the senior center. And the chief come down there the other day and I'll tell you what, the people there just applauded because they were scared to go shopping. And we want to spend our money in Crescent, in Crescent City, we don't want to have to go out of town. So this is a, a good way to do it. I also want to tell you a little story. My daughter-in-law happened to work in one of the stores. And they were moving and so they decided, well, we'll hire some of these boys. So I'd hired four of them. They worked the whole two hours and they come up to her and ask her, how much are we making an hour? She said, minimum wage. She was only getting a dollar and a half more. And they said, well, we can't work for minimum wage. We'd make more in the corner. And this is pretty bad. And so my daughter-in-law was, like I say, is a real shy individual like myself and she worked the whole route to the people up in Brookings, this is up in Brookings. And low and behold, the panhandling quit because they quit getting the money. And that's what you gotta do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bueller?
I'm Joan Bueller and I live in the city. Number one, I want to thank the, excuse me, the city for having their town hall meeting last December, I believe it was. I went and I was very, I enjoyed it a lot because there was a lot of issues that came to light. And then I want to thank Rod Butler for summarizing everything and getting it out to the people who left an address. That was, I thought, okay, they're really gonna do something about this and I'm very happy to know that you're gonna have another town hall meeting, I believe in May?
March 20th.
March 20th, okay, I was wrong, thank you. For the first time in my life, I was afraid in Crescent City. And I've lived here since 1943. I pulled into the shopping center and it seemed like there was a, and there was a homeless person or a panhandler in front of my car, there was one behind me and one walking towards, and they were communicating with each other. I immediately locked my door and I thought, okay, what do I do now? Because I felt threatened. So I'm, I'm in favor of this ordinance against aggressive panhandling. And like Mr. Plack said, if we do it in the city, they're gonna move to the county. And I, I noticed at Walmart, at Home Depot where there's a lot of people, they're already there. So I'm hoping that the county can pick up on this as well, but I'm definitely in favor of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bradford? Nice to see you.
My name is Craig Bradford and I live in Huyachi. I'm here at the behest of the police chief. In a previous life, I was the deputy city manager and the acting city manager of North Las Vegas in the jurisdiction of 60 square miles and about probably around million point two people. We had a serious problem. A lot of it was caused by the cities that were not far away from us who pushed their homeless and their panhandlers at us. Had my friend, the city manager of Phoenix, for instance, took some budget money and went out and bought bus tickets for all of the homeless people, gave them one-way tickets to, to my town. The way we handled that is with an ordinance that is something like this, but preparatory to that, we pushed the homeless people out of our city by not allowing them to live in public places, by, by taking our city domain back. Now, we did some serious studies. We found that of that crowd, you had about 60% that were bona fide schizophrenics. You had 20% who were homeless because they were between fairs and things where they worked on a seasonal basis. And then the remainder, we're no kidding, people who were ducking the law. They had warrants and warrants. You had wars amongst them. It was just, it was divisive for our city and we had some serious criminal problems going on because of it. So we moved them out, we then put this ordinance into place and then we rolled in a lot of mercy organizations, much like you have here, to deal with the situation and really cleaned it up overnight. The key was moving the homeless people out, the residents, the resident homeless people out of the area. You have a great police chief here. He is second to none, just as wonderful as they come. What he's done here is just terrific.
Thank you. Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Sarah Cruz and I live in Maple Tree, LA.
Sarah Cruz?
Cruz, K-R-U-S-E.
Thank you.
I may be the only bleeding heart in this room, but I'm concerned that homeless people, the gentleman before me just spoke about 60% of schizophrenics. Well, if a member of my family was schizophrenic and out in the street, I would not hope that somebody would drive them out of town and shove them to somebody else's jurisdiction. But I'm still don't believe in aggressive panhandling. But I do think that the situation in a town where half, I don't know if half the town is one paycheck away from a disaster or foreclosure or SSI didn't come or HUD housing wasn't available and et cetera, et cetera, and in a town where a lot of people seem to be poor, that this hardness against homeless people and the harsh measures that people want to take may not, if they become draconian, some of the measures sound good in the ordinance, I'm against aggressive panhandling, but if they get taken to the draconian measures where we're gonna say shove these people out of here, stick them somewhere where nobody's gonna be bothered with them, I think it, it's a problem. And I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that there are a lot of people who could, whose feet could be in those shoes, one paycheck later or one foreclosure later. And even though the town does try to do what they can, there, there aren't services for everybody. And a sign certainly saying, you know, I need help, isn't, isn't aggressive, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we need to remember that what we're talking about tonight is not the homeless popula- population, but aggressive panhandling and we're trying to decipher the difference between those two and we do realize that sometimes those two issues cross over. Sir?
My name's Jason Thornton, that's J-E-S-O-N-T-H-O-R-N-T-O-N. I live over on Pebble Beach area.
Thank you.
Listening to a lot of people here, obviously we don't need yet another story about, you know, our experience because I think we get the point, it's a bit of a problem. I think the issue maybe needs a little clarification. I'm hoping that the last speaker, if her family member was schizophrenic or something, that they wouldn't end up on the street. I know if a member of my family had a problem, I would be taking care of them. That being said, when I was working, because I'm currently unemployed unfortunately, when you're in a, a situation like that, you get a lot of information on what's known as harassment. Now, the language gets so thick in these things that without intention, if you look at somebody the wrong way and they feel uncomfortable, you are in violation of harassment codes. And I believe that this is applicable because when you're in a soliciting environment and somebody comes up to you, they don't have to, you know, threaten you, they don't have to have a weapon, all you have to do is feel harassed and you are harassed. So I think that the difference between, you know, passive soliciting and aggressive soliciting is really more a matter of opinion. And if we just document, okay, this is one and this is the other, I think it's still gonna make some people feel uncomfortable. Because, you know, to them, something else still, still impedes their ability to go and spend their money. I think that the other issue is that when I was younger in high school, we did a project where we chose to do homeless people in the area. This was in a bigger city, it was down in San Diego. And we actually, the whole school ended up seeing our presentation because they liked it so much. But we went out and we interviewed a lot of homeless people. Now, a lot of, like you said, it's not the same issue necessarily, but we also have to look it into the context that there is overlap there. And a lot of the people who are panhandling are homeless people. And most of them, I'd say 90% of the people that we interviewed were not homeless by situation, but by choice. So it's not so much we're kicking these people out instead of treating them, as much as they don't want to be treated, all they want is to free money. And as long as we keep giving that to them, we're gonna have this problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Cheryl Corpstein?
I'm Cheryl Corpstein, a county resident, and I'm actually here on behalf of BID tonight. BID is the Business Improvement District that is located geographically in downtown Crescent City, in case anybody didn't know. We are very grateful to Chief Plack, he did a wonderful job. He attended several of our meetings, gave us information. He also hosted a series of meetings that were open to the public to come in and get more information. And I applaud that he did that because to deal with this situation, we really need to have the information. We don't want to be heartless, we don't want to be cruel, but we all know that we don't want our daughters or our mothers or even our elderly grandfathers having to get out of a car and possibly face someone who could do them harm. I do ask the city council to approve this measure. I think it's a great ordinance. I think it makes us all feel a little bit safer. It doesn't take away anybody's right to make a living in any way that they choose, but it does make all of us have a little bit more choice in whether we're approached by those people and be able to feel like we can shop anywhere at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Chris Howard, county resident. This community is clearly defined a problem and it's existed for quite some period of time. And I too would like to thank Chief Plack and General Counsel Bob Black for pursuing this, researching it and defining what clearly is now a set of guidelines and policy that we can implement here in the city limits. This community has invested very heavily in attracting tourists to this area. And this community is very invested in seeing the greener grass grow around here again and coming out of the last 25 years of dog rooms. And one of those ways to start is exactly how this issue is being addressed tonight. And I think it's a great first step, so please, in your infinite wisdom, approve this policy this evening and let it go forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Ma'am? Good evening.
Yvonne Supressi. I work at the Chamber of Commerce, the Visitors Bureau, and a lot of the tourists come in and tell us different things. Now, they won't tell us when they come in there what they think about the panhandlers, but they call us after they've left the community, taken their money and gone to Brookings or to Eureka and high-tailed it out of here because of the panhandlers. We hear it all the time from them. We get notes from them and they call us and they're scared to death and they can't understand why we have so many, as they say, they're on air for a single corner. I know that's an exaggeration, but that's what we hear back. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Steve?
I want you to hear this, Mike.
Steve Perez?
Steve Perez. I'm a county resident. Chief, thank you so much for the quality work that's been brought forward today. I, I do have a question though, and that is, was there any effort to work with the developmental disability community to understand how this panhandling was affecting them? Adult consumers with, that suffer from mental retardation or cerebral palsy. One of the things that we have learned through the Redwood Coast Regional Center is that we do have this kind of aggressive intimidation being brought on to adult consumers, adults with mental retardation that are living in group homes. And because of their vulnerability, because of their lack of coping skills, they endure it very silently. However, through the various vendors that we have that provide services to these citizens, we learn about these incidents that are occurring. So I know you're pretty far along in the process of working through this issue on this ordinance, but if there is still time, I would really encourage the city to take a look at this as it relates to our adult citizens here in, in, in the city and in the county as well, Mike, that are enduring this kind of issues. And to show you how serious this is for us in the developmental disability community, my wife and my granddaughter do not shop at Walmart or at Safeway together. We will not go through the gauntlet while we're pushing my granddaughter in her wheelchair. We will go to Fred Meyer. We will go to the Ray's up there. Anytime we want to take my granddaughter shopping, give her a chance to move around in her wheelchair on her own to learn the art and skill of mobility, we don't do it here in town. It's not safe with the panhandlers and we're very susceptible. And what is my wife going to do? What am I going to do if we're aggressively confronted in that kind of situation? The work is great, chief. I just ask you to take just a little bit broader look if time permits or maybe put it somewhere in your back pocket where we can get together and talk with the right people about adding that element. And Mike, it needs to be addressed in the county. It really does. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Hey, Paul?
Howdy, howdy. My name is Paul Dillard, D-I-L-L-A-R-D. I'm a county resident. This has really been an ongoing problem for quite a while. This goes for years, not just this community, but other communities. Most of the people have covered the issue very well. I want to thank all those people who took time out of their life to come here to speak to the council on this issue and also get it referred to the board and let them take care of it. It is a public safety issue. It's a health issue, but it's, it's a public safety issue not only for our citizens who are trying to shop, it's a safety issue for those who are in this situation that they're, unfortunately have to solicit or they are homeless or whatever. And as we know by the crime that goes on behind Safeway and Ray's in the jungle back there. The, I know of three situations. One happened at Ray's where a guy come out with his wife and he was unloading the cart and a guy come up and asked for money and all of a sudden the guy was telling his wife, get in the car, get in the car now. Because when he told him, no, I'm not gonna give you money, he opened up his jacket and there was a big buck knife. Okay? So that, nothing happened out of that. He was able to control the situation and get on and get out of the area. I know of another situation in front of Safeway in which a lady was sitting in the car in her truck and her husband had gone into Safeway for medication and picked up a prescription and a guy come up and said, hey, get some money. But when she told him, no, get on, he immediately started to say, hey, you're in a big four-wheel drive Ford, I know you got money, you know, kicked you out. And then he started berating her and slandering her with profane language. You know, people don't need to have that. You hear that in, you know, I, I pass that on to law enforcement because I'm involved in that type of stuff. But it really kind of comes home the other day when I was out shopping and I had pushed up to my truck and I went to unload it and I turned around and this lady's got her hand in my basket and she's got a bag, a plastic bag of stuff. And I just kind of, I don't intimidate real well, but I just kind of, you take, grab her by the arm and I said, what are you doing? And she said, oh, I was gonna help you unload it, put it in the car. And I don't think so, you know? So.
That's awfully generous of her.
Yeah, I thought it was real. I'm glad I turned around quick enough. But I think where we're at is not only is the chief puts together adequately something to educate the people, we, we need to educate our citizens to report this stuff. In both cases I cited earlier, I said, well, why didn't you call them? Call the police, call the dispatch, call 911, do something. And they didn't seem to understand that. But they think we're too busy to take care of that. But we got an organization that will take care of that. And I think that's where it is. We need to educate our people that we don't have to tolerate that. And I think that's important and I, I think you guys are doing a wonderful job by giving direction to the law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Lonsdale? Oh, sorry. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Rose Tatman and I just, I only feel compelled to get up to support my fellow manager because I've been a McDonald's manager now for 10 years. And so I started in the Eureka area in a store in downtown and it, you know, the aggressive panhandling is, it's not just Crescent City. But it's, it's nice to see that Crescent City is doing something because before they called the police, our customers come and get me. And so, you know, I have fellow managers that have had to wake people up in our lobby and had the person wake up with a knife first and then say what? And, you know, it just, when you chase the same individual off of the property six, seven, eight, 10 times before you even call the police because you know that you don't want to be a nuisance, it, it's nice to have something that backs that. And so, it can't be said enough too, that that same money, you know, if $10, $5, if someone's handing this money to one individual here and there... if someone's handing this money to one individual here and there, but that same money is compounded, you know, five times over or so to CAN or, I say CAN because I hear that a lot, but, you know, one of these other organizations, it can be used so much better. Anyway.
Thank you. Mr. Longsdale.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Longsdale, and I live in Crescent City. With your permission, I'd like to bring us back from the anecdotal world into the dull world of the draft ordinance that's before you tonight. In some areas, it makes a lot of sense. But in a few areas, which I'll try to illustrate for you, it's too broad and may lead to some discriminatory application. For example, aggressive behavior. The most aggressive behavior that I've encountered in front of Safeway is from the Girl Scouts selling cookies. But obviously, you know, that's, that's probably going to be ruled as an exception to the application of the ordinance. So is that discriminatory in its application? Maybe so. Signs on intersections, within 20 feet of intersections. The young folks out there with the car wash sign, shoving the sign out into the street. Is that aggressive and not allowed under the ordinance? The way the ordinance is written, it is not allowed. But if those folks are treated differently than the solicitors who are out there, the so-called undesirable solicitors, then the ordinance might be applied in a discriminatory fashion. So those are things that I think that you and your staffs might want to take a look at before you go final on the ordinance. If it's too broad, there's great potential for discrimination in the way it's applied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Well, 20 people later, I'm very happy to hear that the majority of you are supportive of this ordinance. I want those of you to understand that our police department, whom I'm very proud of, will not think of your phone call as a nuisance. So if you are being solicited aggressively, please dial 911. Mr. Plack, for a business owner that may have to remove a person 10 times for situations like the young lady from McDonald's, are they, can they get a restraining order for that person? Or is that even, is that a bad idea?
Well, my suggestion at that point is to call the police. We need, my officers used to know these individuals first-name basis, but there's too many of them for them to know the first-name basis. So therefore, it's important that the police respond to identify who this individual is, at which time they can all sign a trespassing at that time, which is a 602, and where if they do come up again, or if they don't go away after the officers leave and comes back, we can, we can charge them at that point. So this way, by handling it the way that it should be handled, by contacting the police in the first place, it certainly takes less time out of the business owner's day to deal with these individuals and let the police do what they need to do. And these, for the, for the record, these individuals are not going to be arrested. They're going to be given a verbal warning to leave first. And then, if they refuse to do so after being advised that they are in violation of the ordinance, then they will be given citations for that, and it will progress through, through the courts.
Yeah, I, you know, one of the questions that was asked of me is, you know, you're probably not, we're probably not going to see them pay their fines. But I do like the idea of community service.
Well, that is my goal. I, the last thing I want to do is pay $68.71, which is my booking fee every time my officer's arresting an individual, and put them in the jail. I don't want to do that. I'd rather just give them a citation and have them show up for court. If they don't show up for court, they know there's going to be a warrant issued for their arrest, and chances are, they're probably not going to be around town waiting to be picked up on that. However, my ultimate goal is the community service. And so therefore, if this ordinance is passed, then what I would like to do is I'd like to see exactly how the probation responsibility for the, for the community service and have a hand in that, along with the charities and the nonprofit groups and the other beneficial-type citizens that we have that would like to help and deal with this on a humanistic approach.
Right. Mr. Plack and I had this discussion. We, you know, we don't want this to also become a problem for probation and, you know, causing excess work for the county probation department. So he's going to have discussions with them very soon and how the city can work together with them if it matures to that level. So, and I just wanted to mention, this is very premature, but the city and the county are looking at the issue behind Rays and Safeway. We do realize that's a huge problem, and we are entering into discussions. We were probably going to do that at our joint city-county meeting, but we had to reschedule that due to an urgency town hall meeting that was needed to be attended. But we are looking at that issue. So I just wanted everybody to be aware that we are going to address that issue one way or another. I'd also like to say that I feel it's important that we start here this evening. But with anything that we do, it can be a work in progress. I think this is definitely going to be a work in progress. Mr. Perez, I think your thoughts are very important. And I know Mr. Plack will very respectfully meet with you and talk about how we can address those issues. And ordinance can come back to us to be revised. So thank you very much for everybody's input. I can't say enough how important it is to have our community respond to the issues that this council is dealing with. Because we try to make good decisions based on what we feel is the best for the entire community. But when we don't hear from anybody, it's hard to do that. So I personally appreciate having all of your input this evening. So thank you. I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the council. Did you have any comments or...
Sure. Madam Mayor, I also want to extend my appreciation to the citizens in the community for coming out this evening. The community made it clear, made it clear to this council and the mayor last year that this was a big issue, a priority in our community. I've personally had several complaints made to me at my office, and I've actually been approached by people and/or my wife when shopping in town. And it is uncomfortable, so it's a real-world issue, to be sure. I also want to thank the chief and the city manager, the city attorney, the staff, everybody that's worked hard on putting this draft together, trying to address, I think there's a true notion that they're trying to reach a reasonableness and a balance, but also address the issue that the people were concerned about, and that's the issue of public safety. I'd also be concerned that our colleagues, and I appreciate Supervisor Sullivan being here, that our colleagues would take this issue up and champion it also because I think it's a real problem if the city moves forward with an ordinance and it ends up just kind of moving this whole riffraff, if you will, to another location, that the problem continues. I think we need to think of it as a community-wide regional issue, not just within the city. And the mayor did allude that there's kind of a no-man's-land out behind Safeway, which is technically in the county. So I guess we could just turn our backs to the city and say, "Well, whatever happens there, happens there." But that's not a solution. So we'd need to think long-term, and it really does become a blight on our community as a whole. And I think that does affect tourists and the residents equally. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Westfall?
As always. I appreciate Bill Longsdale's input. I don't know how that can be incorporated. It seems like it's one of those things that's so easily understood. You know, Girl Scouts are not panhandling. They're not, even though they may be a little aggressive, they are not soliciting. But it is a very good point. This is long overdue. I'm proud to be a part of the process.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, thank you. Well, I will just hit an area that hasn't been noted before. I especially appreciate the resource guide that the chief has creatively put together. And I like the idea of adding the veterans to it. But that way, it won't be perceived by the target population nor outlining communities as a form of Greyhound therapy. But it'll be a resource guide for the people who are, that were wanting to discourage any kind of solicitation. And I believe, excuse me, that on the issue that Mr. Longsdale addressed with us that under Chapter 9.18, Item C, that the area that he was talking about, the conduct that undermines the public's basic right to be in and enjoy public places without fear, I think that that might cover the area that the Girl Scouts, you know, we're not, they're not trying to intimidate persons or aggressively seek, you know, solicitations, nor are the people who are trying to raise funds by car washing. So that might cover the area that he was talking about. So that's just a thought there, so.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate all the hard work that everyone has put into the ordinance.
And just a note about, you know, because I, there is a group out there on the weekends that are actively trying to get you to pull over to get your car washed, and they're assigned to Trillium House. But I'm pleased to report that that group of people are recovering addicts. And they're raising the money for them to hopefully move forward with their lives and find their own housing and be able to get a job. And so, that's one positive. Okay, I think that we are ready to move forward.
May I just make one clarification on that, if you don't mind?
Sure.
As far as the Girl Scouts are concerned and everything, that is going to be on private property. If they have permission from the owner, them Boy Scouts or Camp Fire Girls or whoever that want to do their donations, that's fine, too. As far as the signs are concerned, 10 feet from any intersection is perfectly fine. We heard from the transit, from Jody on the transit issue, on the bus drivers there, in where it pulls people away from the intersections, away from the gutters, and where people push their signs in front of the cars. So it's a hazard. It's a safety issue. So that's not gonna be an issue as well.
And I believe the ordinance says if you have permission from the property owner, you are allowed to solicit.
Yes.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion?
No move?
I'll second it.
Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Slert.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall.
Yes.
Mayor Shalone.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor, who seconded that? Was it Councilmember Slert?
Mr. Slert.
Thank you.
Okay, our final item of business this evening is to promote our normally-formed event, the Crescent City Crab Wine and Cheese Festival. And this is a joint venture between the City of Crescent City and the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. And Ms. Rambo.
Thank you very much. As you mentioned, we are working with the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority in planning the two, what we're calling the 2010 Crab Wine and Cheese Festival, Crescent City Crab Wine and Cheese Festival, sorry. The event is planned February 20th, Cultural Center, from the hours of 4 to 9, with activities for people of all ages. So we're including...
For those of you that are leaving, don't forget to come to the Crab Wine and Cheese Festival on February 20th.
That's right.
At the Crescent City Cultural Center, from 4 to 9 p.m.
Right. We have planned the event to, basically as a sponsor-paid event. We are getting some sponsors. We have several lined up already. And our expenditures are not anticipated to go over what we bring in with sponsorship. So the city wouldn't be spending any money out of pocket for this. So I'm going to then turn it over to Bill. He's gonna give you some more details.
I'd like to know who put the flyer together.
The flyer was drafted by Karen Phillips of PS Secretaryial Services.
So was that, this, was it a joke?
I'm sorry. Are you talking about this, this thing?
The winner goes free after a kiss from the mayor?
Sorry, that was actually a working document that I did not think would be incorporated...
I just saw that today. I sent him a text message. I said, "Nice try."
I, yeah, apologize. I didn't think it would be incorporated into the documents that went to the city council. But, and I hadn't discussed it with you before.
No, you hadn't. Thank you very much.
I thought we could raise a lot of money. It's the kiss, though.
I'm not sure where the lips are on a crab, actually.
It's not even that late.
As Michelle mentioned, we plan this to be a revenue-neutral event in the sense that we're anticipating it will not cost the city any money. As a matter of fact, we anticipate that we will have revenue in excess of our expenses because that's what we plan to donate to the three animal-based charities as part of the event. So it's the first time, and as the mayor mentioned earlier about another item, this is sort of a work in progress. We don't know how this is gonna work out. This year, we're kind of keeping it local. We haven't done a lot of out-of-area advertising or marketing. We want to see how it goes. We just want to get our feet under our ground, under ourselves here for this first time. We do have a number of volunteers that have signed up. We have two bands that have signed up. We have some more events for children. So it is nicely filling out.
Great. I think I sent you a message earlier. I'd like to see a little more detail on the budget that's been put together.
We can provide you that. Part of this evening is that we haven't actively solicited sponsorships because we wanted to make sure that we were, it was okay to do this on behalf of the city of Crescent City. So that's one reason we're here this evening.
Great. And just for the council's knowledge, I already seeked legal input from Mr. Black's office as to whether or not it was legal for the city to sponsor a public event, kind of mingling it with public funds, and how does that work? And I was assured that it's legal as long as it's kept, the money is kept separate, in a separate account, and that we do not actually make any money. If there is any revenue in excess of expenses, like Mr. Renfro said, we will donate that money to a nonprofit.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council?
No, I would just offer that I think it's a great event and celebrates our local assets, Romiano's Cheese and Albers Seafoods, the crab. And so, and then I think, is it S-Curve Deli? So that's all very positive, and I think it can lead to better things in the future. And I like the idea that it's revenue-neutral. And if we can achieve that, that's a good thing. I guess I was gonna raise one issue. Being at the Cultural Center, would the setup and the cleanup come under the regular standard services that we have, the service contract?
With our cleaning service?
Yeah, effective about a month ago, the cleaning service did take over all those roles, including event cleanup at the Cultural Center, so.
Is that costing people more money then if they rent the facility?
We actually haven't adjusted the rates yet. That'll have to come to the council. Our plan would be to try to get the users to pay for most or all of that. Our plan would be to try to get the users to pay for most or all of that private sector contractor charge, but that'll ultimately be a council decision as to whether you're comfortable with that.
I did want to mention that we, again, we didn't want this to be any kind of an economic burden on the city, and that we're trying to get this funded entirely by private donations and those sorts of things. The other issue I wanted to bring up is that we have changed it to a single crab race. This will be the international world-famous crab race, and it will be modeled more on the calaveras frog jumping contest in the sense that we are going to have a central circle where the crabs are put in, and then an outer ring. And the first crab to reach, the first three crabs to reach the outer ring will win first, second, and third prize. So it'll be a little different way from, I understand they did it in the past.
How do you choose who gets to be in the crab race?
We are selling racing crabs, which you're welcome to buy one. We have sold two. We're only going to have 10 because we are going to have a single race, and we're constrained by space. So the first 10 people or organizations will be able to have a racing crab.
Well, I think the city manager should have one.
You do have 30 minutes before the race to detail your crab so we could put his face on the top of the crab at that point.
I think we should vote. Mr. Butler, we're going to induct him into crab racing.
Any further questions?
No, my only comment is that I, as you know, that the Mural Society is having their fundraiser the same evening. It's called Dance the Night Away from 6:30 to 11:00. And so hopefully, people will go to both events. They can go to the Crab Wine and Cheese Festival first, and then hit the Mural Society.
And then go Dance the Night Away.
Yeah.
Right?
And I have coordinated that with Linda Gang, I think. And that's exactly what I said we would do. We do have an emcee and a stage up there, and we will certainly encourage folks to go and spend the rest of their evening at their fun dancing event.
Yeah, so you could have dinner, and the crab races first, and then go dance off, all that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Dance off those calories.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you very much for, I'd just like to thank both of you for working together to make this happen.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
Okay, is there any public comment on the event itself, Mr. Miles?
I hope the city would sponsor this event. It's glad to see the Crescent City Crab Races come back. I ran into Jeff, and if people don't know who Jeff was, he was the past Director of the Chamber of Commerce. He promoted the crab races for a number of years. And then for a couple of years, we didn't have it. Kelly was involved in the crab races. But I believe this brings up another issue that this body needs to come back at and look at. And if this has come before you before, and staff was going to report on this, back to this council, was we can't keep giving the Cultural Center away to every Tom, Dick, and Harry group without charging them, clean up, a set-up fee. You know, we're going to have the Lucian Goose people next. You know, down the road, we got, you know, who else? Because a number of nonprofits have gotten use for the city to flip the bill. And as the taxpayer, it's getting a little old. And it does cost us a little bit more, I think, with our current contract with the cleaning company. Why I ask, know about this. The other day, I was talking to a couple of city workers who are cleaning the mall, and they got a phone call. And our wonderful Chamber Director was all upset, and Linda had transferred the call because the lights on the stage had to be done for the chamber dinner. You know, our city carpenters had to stop what they were doing and go put tube lights for the stage area. That cost us, and we need to start to think how some of these organizations need to start paying.
Thank you.
First, crabs don't have lips. They actually have little mandibles that pull their food in. Second, not only have we not done any outside advertising, we haven't done any inside advertising. If you go downtown, where's a big banner or something that says Wine and Cheese Festival? I mean, how is anybody going to know unless they specifically look for it that this is even going on? I mean, I see this so many times when I'm looking for events around here, because there's just nothing to do here. You know, I mean, every once in a while, there's something like this or something else, but otherwise, there's nothing to do here. There's no big things going on. We don't have any really big concerts that come here. We really don't have a venue for that, but, you know. So when we have something like this, why isn't there a huge banner right downtown on the park, I can't remember, Ocean Park, whatever it is.
Beachfront Park.
Beachfront Park. A huge thing. I mean, it's going to cost a little bit of money. You usually budget for things like that in advertisement when you do an event like this. I'd like to see something more like that. If not for this event, then coming events budgeted it in. The second thing is my concern that some of these events are going to be business-oriented events where, okay, here's three businesses, and they want to be recognized, so what's three things that these have to promote, and we'll call it the something event? I would like to see events like this opened up more, where we're given a lot more notice and, hey, we're thinking of a theme like this, let's get all the businesses who wish to participate a chance to come in, instead of just, hey, we're announcing this, and these businesses are a part of it. Because I didn't hear anything about it. I'm sure there's a lot of other little businesses. And it doesn't necessarily have to be specifically Crescent City businesses, because the money spent is spent in Crescent City. We pull tourists in to Crescent City to spend their money. So if somebody from Brookings has their cheese factory, have them come in and provide some stuff. Give a little competition here. Don't just make it about highlighting Crescent City businesses that we could do in any venue. Let's make it more of a community event.
Well, I like the idea of highlighting the Crescent City businesses and all of those in Delano County. That's our job. We're here to support our local businesses so that they can provide jobs and places for us to shop. So I like the idea of a sign. Crescent City isn't in the job of advertising. Unfortunately, the Chamber let the Crab Races Festival go a couple of years ago. This is the City and Tri-Agencies' very small attempt at trying to revive something for our local people and celebrating our resources here and promoting our cheese factory and our local crab industry. And obviously, as you heard Bill say earlier, this is a work in progress. They just started planning it about a month and a half ago. And we're excited to see it move forward and hope that it will grow in the future and possibly get the Chamber of Commerce back involved. So thank you for your input, though. Okay, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close it and bring it back to the council. I'd like to see a motion to support the city being involved with this project.
I would make a motion to approve the city's sponsorship of the 2010 Crescent City Crab Wine and Cheese Festival.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. And we're going to move on to legislative matters. I just wanted to ask Mr. Butler for an update on the Local Cities Conference that was held on the telephone the other day, where small cities were coastal-ish, cities were, small coastal cities were discussed.
Yes, we ended up having two different staff members participate in that. I did not, but Michelle Rambo and Eric Taylor took kind of shifts and were each involved about a half of that conversation. I can either have Ms. Rambo, if she's still around, report on the part that she heard. And they had just gotten to the Crescent City-specific discussion when she, I think she heard about the first 20 minutes of that, and then she had to go off the call. Then I can have Eric Taylor provide a report for you at the next meeting or between now and the next meeting.
That's fine. If you just want to give us a memo, that'd be fine.
Okay.
And then also, I noticed we've gotten a letter from, a request from Charles Daldorf a couple of times in the past month on supporting a statewide issue, and I didn't know if we had addressed that.
No, we certainly intend to participate in that. I can have a report either at the February 16th meeting or March 1st meeting. This is the statewide ballot initiative to protect local revenue sources, and the signature gathering process is in the works now. It's being sponsored by the League of California Cities, and we'll put that, we'll agenda this for one of the next two meetings.
Okay. And I'm sorry that Mr. Black just left, so I'll see if he comes back in here before I make my comments. Mr. Slert? Do you have any reports, concerns, referrals?
I do. I was happy to attend the, I think, very successful Chamber Annual Dinner last Saturday night. I think a good time was had by all, bringing the business community together. I also appreciated the new president of the Chamber's comments of support regarding the wastewater treatment facility. I thought that was greatly appreciated.
What was nice was the huge round of applause after her speech regarding the wastewater treatment plant.
And then, you know, earlier, we did pass the budget, or the change order, or not change order, but the Order Number 32 for Wallen and Stover Construction. And I failed to note at that time that the wastewater treatment plant at this time is currently 88% complete with its budget, and it's under budget, and it's ahead of schedule. So those are a couple, three things that I think are worthy of mentioning. And then I'd like to follow up on two other items. The courthouse tree replacement, kind of ongoing saga. And then the accounting update regarding the recall and the additional associated legal fees for staff legal time.
Sure. Courthouse trees. I actually had lunch with Jerry Enderkoffler from the Courts on Wednesday of last week, got a full update from him. They have selected all of the tree species that they're going to be using. They're honoring our request to use minimum 24-inch box trees, and those are all being assembled in Sacramento right now. There are a lot of these trees that can't be found on the North Coast, from North Coast nurseries. So they're being purchased and delivered now to Sacramento. Then they'll be trucked up here all in one time or in one trip.
And explain me what a 24-inch box tree is.
Yeah, that would be, if you've seen maybe at Home Depot, or if you've been on a large construction project, and they're just doing the landscaping, you'll see a tree that, it still looks like a young tree, but it is planted in a big wooden square box. It's 24 inches square usually. And that basically is a way of making sure that we get a more mature tree that will grow faster and won't look like a stick for the first three or four years. That was one thing that Mr. Slert and Mr. Burns had specifically requested when we had the subcommittee meeting with Mr. Enderkoffler. So it's basically, it's more expensive to do it that way, and it, depending on what type of tree you're buying, it takes a little more time to find them because they don't always have a huge supply of each particular type of tree in your area in that 24-inch box size. But we'd rather wait for that to happen and get the bigger tree than put in something that, you know, is in one of those little plant or plastic round planters that's going to take a lot longer to mature and grow. So bottom line is, we're probably looking still at another three to five weeks to actually have the trees planted. And we're going to have an actual design, landscape design, that I can show Mr. Slert and Mr. Burns and the rest of the council within the next week or so from Mr. Enderkoffler. He gave me a listing of everything that they have selected so far, but I didn't see it in an actual visual graphic yet.
You know, as much as I thought the Monterey Cypress trees were so beautiful and prestigious, wow, having them gone, it just like really opened up that area. It looks so nice.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I mean, it's, it does. It looks, it looks nice.
And I don't have the Slert expertise or knowledge in landscape, but I think what they're proposing is going to look nice. It'll be a combination of trees and some shrubs. There'll be some variation. So you'll, I think we're going to end up, you know, there will always be some disagreement about whether those trees should have been taken down. But we're going to have something there that it looks like they're making a good faith effort to put a quality landscape design in that will at least, you know, over time, as it matures, you give it a nice look and give it some color.
Just a follow-up. I don't have a preference for parking lots. I deal with them a lot, but I don't have a preference.
No, it's just you can actually see the courthouse now.
I guess one comment I would have is that it's a little frustrating that I thought that we, as the city, if not my colleague, Mr. Burns, we were going to review some trees before they were actually purchased, so that we had some input in the process versus them doing whatever is a good deal for the courts and then saying, "By the way, here you are, city." So if there's any chance that we can have some review and input before the actual purchase is made, and I have to say that I've dealt with projects where you spend $1,000 a vertical foot on a trunk of a tree for a project, and a 24-inch box is a very token gesture. I mean, a reasonable specimen tree is usually a 48-inch box, which is twice as large, and it has more girth to it and has more of a presence, so.
Was the, did the state agree to allow Charles and Dennis to be a part of that process?
Yeah, I too have been a little, I was a little dismayed when I heard that they were actually in the process of ordering trees at this point. But we'll get the information to Mr. Slert and Mr. Burns as soon as possible and see if we can slow down the train a little bit and make sure that they're not doing something that has real concerns for us.
Okay, thank you.
And then the follow-up on the recall.
Cost accounting. The big item that we're waiting for is the invoice from the County Clerk, Register of Voters' Office. We expect to get that in the next two weeks. So I would think by the time of the February 16th meeting, that will be in. And then this morning, I directed Laura to go ahead and update all of the staff costs that we reported to you originally on December 7th. So we'll have an updated look at that, and we'll have the Register of Voters' contract costs in as well for the signature verification process that's been going on.
Well, I was a little disappointed to hear that the original estimate for, from the county to do the signature verification process was going to be around $4,000 or $5,000. And that in passing, we've been told that we are also paying for days of Ms. Westfall's time of being down at the county to look at people's signature cards and go through the, kind of double-checking, I guess, what the county did. And I'm not sure how many hours you spent down there. Do you know?
No, but I don't understand why they would be charging the city for my time spent down there.
Apparently, I've heard that they are.
I'd like to know why.
No, not for her time, or the time spent by county staff responding to the questions and information requests made by Ms. Westfall and her and company. Not for her time. I think there's confusion.
Does that make sense?
You understand the difference?
Yes, and I might have asked them three or four questions, so again, I don't understand why there would be any. I mean, we're talking minutes. We're not talking hours.
I don't understand either. I was just told by a high-level county administrator that we should expect to receive a hefty bill. Whether that turns out to be the case or not, I don't know, but that's what I was told.
Okay. And we, was that all you needed, Mr. Slert? Okay. Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Yes, I attended the LAFCO meeting, our Delnart Senior Center board meeting. By the way, if anybody wants a very good nutritious lunch, the Delnart Senior Center provides one of those and you can check and see what they're serving each day and you could bump up your donation because the nutrition program is really in need of donations for their program. So join them for lunch and make a good donation. I attended along with the mayor and I believe Ms. Westfall was there, but I don't know if she stayed, the USDA meeting that they had. I know that our city manager was there on the 25th in lieu of the joint city-county meeting. And then I too attended along with the mayor and my colleague, Councilmember Slert and his lovely wife, the chamber annual recognition dinner, which I felt was a huge success and it was very well-attended. I think it was sold out. And the staff did a tremendous job with everything, so that was quite wonderful. And since my colleague brought it up, the Wallen-Stover payment, the issue has been addressed and resolved and I think it's very unreasonable for the continued attack on Stover engineering over and over and over again. And I would like Ms. Westfall to drop that issue. This was a subcontractor number one and I would encourage her to drop that issue. It is beginning to look like a vendetta. Thank you.
Ms. Westfall, do you have anything to report?
No, but I would like to make a quick response that the Stover issue is not a vendetta. We're talking about Coburn Electric who is cited and it is not a dead issue yet. So Stover is being paid to do labor compliance and labor compliance is not being done. And that's the purpose for asking that those monies be withheld until later date.
Hats off to the Chamber of Commerce. They put on a lovely event on Saturday evening. Was very proud to see Mr. Dwayne Reichlin honored for a lifetime achievement award, the small business, or not small, but business leader of the year. My mind just went blank. Who was it?
The business improvement, or?
[laughing].
Which one are you talking about?
Yes, thank you. The owners of Good Harvest.
Yes, Markley.
Yeah.
That was fantastic.
Actually, no, that was the Triplicates. Come on, Nick, help me out. The Triplicates Pride Award was Good Harvest. The Business Leader of the Year.
Dwayne Reichlin.
But then who got the?
Lifetime Achievement.
Okay, that's right.
John Manaw.
John, thank you. I got him backwards. Strike everything I just said. The Business Leader of the Year was Dwayne Reichlin and the Lifetime Achievement Award was John Manaw, previous CEO for like 30-some years with Sutter Coast Hospital. So just really great community members and so I was really proud of that. And Mr. Reichlin probably doesn't know this, but I nominated him. And it was funny because I nominated him two years in a row and I never heard anything back from the chamber, so I just thought, you know, oh, they must already have someone chosen both years. So the fact that he got honored this year was, made me very happy. Very well-deserving, very hard worker and has been a part of our community for years and years and years. Really wonderful family and has provided hundreds of jobs to our local people.
He's where we're at.
Yes, he does, yes. California Endowment, met with Laura Olson last week and then Catherine and I both attended a luncheon today out of Elk Valley Rancheria's Community Center with the California Endowment and moving our healthy family issues forward. And I'm really looking forward to the city being able to collaborate with them and moving issues that deal with our youth forward. I think that's, one of the gentlemen that was speaking today made a very profound statement and he said that, you know, we talked about kind of protecting our senior citizens, but it really starts with our kids. And once we start having healthier kids, those healthier kids become more productive people in the community. And hopefully then, once they get to the level of being a senior citizen, they are able to take care of themselves a little more efficiently. So it's a lifelong cycle that we need to start breaking and supporting. Let's see. We had a tri-agency meeting recently that I attended. I know Mr. Butler's not going to want to hear this from me one more time, but I'd like to see an update on our, on if we are, either an update or take it off the board, the word annexation with the harbor, because we haven't addressed it for months and months and months. So I'd like to see where we are with that. Received half of a legal update tonight and like to see the rest of that presented on the next agenda. And then also, we received a memo from the housing authority, an annual report. I'd like to see that actually put on the agenda for the next housing authority meeting. And I think that's it for me. Oh, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. I just wanted to thank our police department. Mr. Plack is one of the few department heads that I hear from on a weekly basis and he sends us out a very thorough report on just the police department, usually weekly, sometimes not so weekly. But if I don't get it in writing, he's talking to me at least, at least on a weekly basis about what our department's doing. And what I like to do is, when I hear about the great things our police officers are doing, I like to acknowledge them personally. And the one thing that I acknowledged this week, and I just like to publicly do so, is arresting the suspect that robbed US Bank within nine minutes. I think that that is unheard of and I think that it's just, everyone really needs to be commended for being successful in that situation and making sure that nobody got hurt. And the fact that we were able to do so in nine minutes, I think is incredible and I think that shows that our police department is very knowledgeable and they take their jobs very seriously and they're dedicated individuals. And that means a lot to me as a single mom, means a lot to me when I'm out there doing business in Crescent City. And it means a lot to me as the mayor to know that our business people and our residents are pretty darn safe. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zeus. Thank you, Zeus. Okay, with that being said, thanks for attending tonight and we'll see you February 16th. Meeting adjourned.